Clerk?
Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Member Chris.
Present.
Man.
Present.
Marcus.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Smith.
Here.
Mayor Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I have you requesting to be excused this evening. I guess you changed your mind?
You want me to be excused?
That's what it said. I'm just saying. Okay. Okay, the invocation is Shane Idleman from Westside Christian Fellowship. Hi Shane.
Dear heavenly Father, Lord, we do pray for this meeting. Lord, we pray for godly leadership and wise counsel, Lord. We also thank you for what this city has done, Lord, and for our law enforcement officers. Just keep them safe, keep them protected, Lord. But I do pray for wisdom and guidance as they make major decisions here. And we just pray that your blessing would be upon this place. And we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
If everybody's face the flag. Put your hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have a couple of presentations tonight. The first one will be from the Vice Mayor, Ron Smith.
Well, tonight, we have the... We have the Student of the Month Award for one of the SOAR students here, and that's Christina Maria Getschall. You can come up. So, let's see. She... Her activities are Physics Club. How many's had physics before? Not an easy tack, because you first have to have algebra, trig, calculus, and then you can get into physics, right?
Yeah.
Just about. So... But it's so much fun that you joined a club for it. So, that's a smart person. Then Avid Club, Christian Club, SOAR Ambassador Film Club. And then your goals are Biology, Biochemistry major, and you want to be a Pediatric Anesthesiologist. It's excellent. Very good goal. So Christina was raised by a hard-working, single mother with assistance from her cousin, moving from Maryland to California at the age of 10, separated her from the care of her extended family. Although the move was traumatic, since entering SOAR high school, she has become a very positive person, a Christian, and someone who will never give up. She realized she needs to use her education to create a good future so as not to struggle like her mother. She hopes for financial aid and scholarships in order to attend medical school, UCLA, after graduating from Humboldt State University. I'm giving it tonight, so I don't know... Is there a scholarship? Jason must give a scholarship, then. She needs some money for UCLA, Jason.
I will defer to the mayor on that one. Of course. Just being in SOAR should entitle you to a scholarship. But to SOAR at SOAR, that's remarkable.
So, congratulations.
You get $1,000, okay? We have the Investigator of the Quarter and the Street Cop of the Quarter and Los Angeles County Sheriff, Captain Bob Johnson, will present those. And he got a new suit.
Thank you, sir. I got it at one of the Lancaster fundraisers, as a matter of fact, so...
All right.
Didn't come too cheap, either. But it was for a good cause. The... This is a great night for Lancaster Sheriff Station, and the reason it is is because we get to recognize some of our personnel who do a phenomenal job. And for those that aren't aware, Lancaster Station's one of the largest sheriff's stations in the entire Los Angeles County, and is definitely the most productive. The amount of calls we handle, the amount of people that are arrested, the amount of reports that are written, amount of observations that are created, exceed all other stations in the county. So, we have 287 personnel at Lancaster Station. 221 of them are sworn personnel. And these three that I'm about to recognize were recognized as Street Cops of the Quarter. And that shows the most well-rounded, most productive street patrol deputies that we have. And it's based on a mathematical situation where they factor in all the calls that they handled, all the reports that they wrote, all the observations that they created, all the arrests that they made, all the citations that they issued. So, it goes to show a very, very, very productive individual. And we're going to recognize three of them tonight, and they are referred to as a Street Cop of the Quarter. For the first three months of the year, they were our most productive field deputies. So, I'd like to ask Lee Warren to come up, Mark O'Grall, and Uriel Cruz. Each of these individuals were recognized in a more of a private setting at the station, and as soon as I gave them their recognition certificates, I had to pull them away and say... Told them that we're going to do it publicly at a later date, and tonight's that date. So, I want to give each of you back your certificate, as well as one from the city. And again, thank you for such productive efforts for the first three months of the year. Thank you very much. Go ahead and open up the ones from the city and take a photo. Congratulations, guys. We've also just implemented two other awards at the station based on the same kind of situation but different parameters, and that's the Investigator of the Quarter, because we felt that there's so much productive work going on in our Detective Bureau, again, one of the most productive detective bureaus in the county, that we felt it was only worthy to recognize as an individual that really exceeds and excels back there. And this individual has been one of the top detectives we've had for quite a while. In the first three months of this year, he's just been on absolute fire, taking people to jail, solving crimes. He's on our property side, and he's really been specializing in stolen property and getting it before it's fended off, whether it's recycled or to a pawn shop. And he's really had some exceptional cases this year, and has resulted in seizure and recovery of thousands and thousands of dollars of stolen property. One of those cases, for example, was $30,000 of property that was being sent to the recycle. They were going to pawn off the metal to get recycled, and he cut it off, recovered all the stolen property, and was able to return it to the city. So, it was a very, very good job on that part. But he's done an exceptional job for us, and he deserves being recognized as Investigator of the Quarter, and that goes to Detective Jeff Williams. The certificate I gave them, you know, they loved and they appreciated, but the one they're really going to cherish is the one that's signed by the mayor. So, they'll be able to use that for the rest of their life. So, again, thank you, council, for that city recognition. And final one is that we decided that we always give recognition to the deputies, but there's so much more that goes on in a patrol station. And we've just implemented this award as well, and it's our Employee of the Quarter. And that looks at our professional staff, because they're the ones doing really the most work, without question. They're the ones processing all the paperwork. And the paperwork at Lancaster Station is absolutely phenomenal. And this individual not only runs that station, she's a... In lack of other words, she's the captain's right-hand person, because she coordinates everything as far as the calendar. In the first three months of this year, she did an exceptional job, not only processing the paper flow through the station. She was recognized by the county for not having one delinquent report or evaluation, and that's an accomplishment in itself, because out of 287 evaluations that go through her desk, she has to make sure every one of them is correct, done grammatically formatted right, and she has to make sure they're done on time. And she did that without one delinquent one, and that was exceptional. But above that, what she really did that stood out this year at the beginning of the year is obviously, you know, there's a transition in command. So, while she was handling the prior captain's workload, she also took on my workload during that transition, had to coordinate both our calendars, which is quite a task in itself. And she's just phenomenally, exceptionally... Exceptional individual, respected by everyone that meets her and works with her. And so, without question, she is worthy of our Employee of the Quarter, and that goes to our Captain-Secretary Dana Doughton. And that's it until next quarter. So, again, thank you for the time and the recognition.
Now, we know who to call when we need something, Dana. Okay. "All speaker cards must be filled out and submitted prior to the agenda item being called. The same rule applies if you wish to speak on non-agendized items at the end of the meeting. Following this process will allow us to conduct a timely and orderly meeting." Thank you. "Deputy City Manager, any items to be removed from the consent calendar?"
No, sir.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we adopt the minutes.
Second.
Let's vote. There's one abstention, and that's because you weren't here, right?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a motion on the consent calendar?
I move to adopt the consent calendar as currently comprised.
Second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Continued public hearing. This hearing was continued from the meeting of May 10, 2011. Therefore, the hearing remains open at this time. We will now hear a report from Assistant to the City Manager Kelvin Tentanoga.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. The council requested that the introduction of the ordinance to be continued from the last meeting we had to tonight's meeting to allow staff to do some additional research. What we did is took a look at four items. One was to determine the appropriate work temperature for horses. Two, to determine the acceptable number of passengers or weight limit for the horse carriages. Three, to identify who would have the right-of-way between the horse carriage and motor vehicles. And the fourth was to address one of the issues or concerns with the business operator about immediately cleaning up after the horse. As a result, staff has contacted three local vets related to the work temperatures. Two of those veterinarians had indicated that 95-degree temperatures would be a safe temperature up here in the Antelope Valley for the work horse. The third local vet indicated a heat index of 130 would be acceptable. The heat index is the combination of both temperature and humidity. In addition, we also had Animal Care and Control that identified 90 degrees as an acceptable work temperature. And as a result, staff is now recommending that we put into the ordinance for council consideration work temperatures up to 95 degrees, and the heat index of 120 would be acceptable for the work horse. The key is that the horses get sufficient rest and water, and that they are subject... They're not subject to conditions that would impair their health or their condition. On the item regarding the weight or number of passengers, through our research, we've identified that there was a wide range of Animal Care and Control identified up to four times the weight of the horse, while other veterinarians talked about two and a half times. Numbers of passengers really varied anywhere from eight to 16. What staff is recommending is that the... For the horse's safety, that we would limit the horse to pull up to two and a half times its weight, or up to six passengers that would not include the driver or the driver's assistant. On the third item, related to who has the right-of-way between the horse carriage and the motor vehicle, it turns out that unless there is a horse crossing or a equine path, both the horse carriage and the motor vehicle actually are subject to the vehicle code. And in that vehicle code, it identifies that neither should be impeding traffic, and therefore, if they do, they need to pull over and allow the traffic to pass through. And so, what we've done is we struck out the language about pulling over when there's two cars or more behind the horse carriage, and they would be subject to the vehicle code. And then there... The horse carriage, like any other motor vehicle, would be cited if they are, in fact, impeding traffic. On the fourth item about cleaning up, we did do some research with other municipalities that do have horse carriages, and they only reference the cleanup of the feces, which in our ordinance, we're proposing that they have... They're equipped with appropriate bags to capture the feces from the horse. As it relates to the urine, the municipalities we talked to are silent on that, because they look at it as similar to your... Any dog or cat that's out there in the public, and the public right-of-way doing their business. They're not requiring the home... The pet owners to clean that up, and therefore, they wouldn't require the horse owner to do the same. And so, again, we struck out the requirement for immediate cleanup of the urine on the public street, but we still keep the requirement for the appropriate bag that would be equipped to the horse to capture the feces. And then lastly, we've been hearing about some complaints about horses being spooked on the streets. We've inquired about what... How that can be controlled, be prevented. What it comes down to is really the training that we're requiring the drivers of these horse carriages, that they go through adequate training, get certified. Part of that certification includes road testing and controlling the horse in the event that that occurs. It is going to be incumbent of that horse driver to be able to soothe and control that horse if it believes that there... It will be spooked or has been spooked, and to immediately control that horse. All these modifications in front of you have been discussed with the independent business operator who brought this originally to you, and they have accepted these changes and modifications. And staff is just asking that tonight, if it's acceptable that you adopt or approve the ordinance be introduced for reading. We're available to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you. Monica Whitmer.
We have to stop meeting like this. I want to first thank Kelvin and staff for all the adjustments, and I think we found a suitable compromise in what is now being presented. I did also want to address some people's concern about the use and suitability of the horses. I was actually the person who suggested that you require driver testing. This puts Lancaster above all the other municipalities that have horse-drawn carriage ordinances. It is the driver who is responsible for their horse, both in their care, their use, and their suitability for the job, whether that horse is traffic-trained or not. It's... It is a matter of a partnership between the driver and his horse. A good, certified, qualified driver is not going to see his horse as a slave. He's not going to misuse that horse. He's going to see that horse as a partner, and that's how I perceive mine. That means also that the horse trusts me, and if something were to come up, he's going to relay to me his concern, and I'm going to be able to reassure him or take control. Also, my carriage has a brake on it, so if he were to become startled, I could put enough pressure to make that carriage, in essence, much heavier, and make him slow down and regain his mind. I will say that my horse is so traffic-trained, he has already been on the Boulevard four times, which we are legal to do, as long as we're not taking passengers, and he has no problem. He has been trained on 70th Street East, where the carrot-and-onion trucks go flying by at 70 miles an hour. And believe me, if that horse can take an 18-wheeler flying by him, he can take anything that will come up on the Boulevard. I really would also like to let anybody who is concerned about the horses realize that unless we're going to not have horses at all, they can be our partners and work with us and for us, whether we ride them or drive them. And my horses like to work. They greet me at the gate, and they're happy to do their job. So, it is a kind way to have a horse go out and do a job, rather than sit in a pasture and be ignored, underfed. The horses that work for a living have to be presented in an extraordinary manner: clean, fed, cared for, vaccinations, farrier work. So, he's going to be above what most people do with their horse. And my horse happens to have been an orphan. I bottle-fed him. He grew up... He's... I've got photos of him being in my house, so I can guarantee you that he would never be abused. He's more a child than a horse. But thank you, council. I look forward for us to finally have this operation fully approved.
Thank you. Carol Sacks.
Hi. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I drove here all the way from Los Angeles because I think it's important that you do not pass an ordinance that would allow the inhumane treatment of horses. We were delighted with your adorable little town, and we think maybe antique cars, or doom buggies, or something fun like that would be way better than the cruel horse and carriage rides that have been banned in so many cities all over America and the world. Why not get on the right path now, before you have to ban this for cruelty later on down the line? Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Davis.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Carol Davis. I'm from Los Angeles. Actually, I'm a New Yorker, but I live in Los Angeles, and I'm the West Coast Director of the Companion Animal Protection Society. The first thing I want to say is in response to this lady who said that 18-wheelers, you said? 18-wheelers were whizzing past her horse. No horse should be anywhere near an 18-wheeler. You're probably wondering why I came here to speak to you tonight. I don't live here. Believe me, I'd rather not have to come here, but because of all the puppy mills and backyard breeders and unacceptable euthanasia rates in the shelters here, I'm a frequent and unwanted guest. So, tonight, I'm here to speak for Lancaster's residents who cannot speak for themselves horses. Respectfully, I speak for our national membership when I state that we are opposed to the passing of an ordinance which allows horse-driven carriages in this city. London, Paris, Beijing, Toronto, Santa Fe, Key West, and other cities around the civilized world have banned this inhumane excuse for entertainment. This is 2011, not 1911. Did Lancaster forget that we had an industrial revolution? Animals are not used as beasts of burden in civilized society, and there are far better ways to attract tourist dollars and tax revenue that do not involve cruelty to animals. If you pass this ordinance, horses will suffer, and I guarantee you that they will suffer. The summers are very harsh here. The temperatures that I just heard are shocking. 130, 120, 90, in the sun. It's unacceptable for horses. And in this economic crisis that we're all enduring, there is no budget and no staff here to enforce the minimum standards of care. CAFs, our organization, the Companion Animal Protection Society, has evidence from our pet store and puppy mill investigations right in this area that Lancaster is not able, unfortunately, to ensure humane treatment of its current animal population at this time. I can promise you that if horses are to be mistreated in this way here, that Lancaster will be subject to ineffective internet, print, TV, media, and physical protest campaign. Animal rights activists will come here and legally put a stop to this if we have to. I thank you so much for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Nan Dillinger.
Good evening. I spent a lot of time as a youth in Lancaster with grandparents. Times have changed. Let's not go backwards. I will comment on the ordinance's omissions. Section 5.54.040, subsection A, paragraph nine, business premises subject to compliance. Corporate offices, stables, who will check? Subsection B, regarding permits issued unless, paragraph six, public peace, health, or safety will be threatened. My subsequent comments will cover this. Section 060, subsection A, paragraph one, a vet will determine the ability of an animal to work? The heat rising from asphalt has been measured at 40 to 90 degrees above ambient temperature. What vet can OK work in 200 degrees? The animal struggles to draw breath while stopping and starting and inhaling noxious fumes. This causes respiratory distress. Paragraph four, you could easily require cushioning between hoof and shoe, but aren't, nor netting to protect eyes. Paragraph six, no minimum length of rope to tie the horse at stands as stated. Paragraph seven, horses not to be subjected to any treatment that will impair good health. I already cited breathing, heat, shoes, eyes, and we'll get to hydration. Consider the skittish nature of horses. They are prey, not predator. They will spook at any time and bolt, collide with cars, cause injury or death to people in both cars and carriages. Your disclaimers will not protect you from lawsuits over a ton weight gone wild. They can be spooked by sirens, horns, diesel trucks, motorcycles, construction noise, crowds, shouting, barking dogs, potholes, a metal can rolling, an umbrella opening, a manhole cover. Metal on metal can cause electrocution. Paragraph eight, no water is required to or from the stables or while working. This could be 18 hours. No time limit is set on work between 8:30 a.m. and midnight. The horses will dehydrate and collapse. Paragraph 20, fly spray is toxic to humans and horses, as well as flies. Paragraph 21, no stopping in traffic. Would you urinate or defecate on the move while being whipped? Section 090, regarding stands, you have made no provisions for water or for awnings for shade. Horses cannot cool off. This leads to heat stroke. L.A. County Department of Animal Care and Control is overwhelmed. With all due respect, Lancaster Shelter is known as one of the poorest in the state. Please draw up a spay neuter ordinance and scrap this one instead of increasing their burden by adding more animals. Horses have powered civilization. They deserve better. Here's a list of 17 cities that have banned horse-drawn vehicles. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I came from Los Angeles.
Did you practice the timing, or did you just... Okay.
They'll pass them out, ma'am. Thanks.
Thank you. Marina Crockett.
Hello. Thank you for having me. My name is Marina Crockett. I am a resident, a private citizen of Santa Clarita, California. And I'm here to ask the City of Lancaster to vote no against animal cruelty, which is what the ordinance 956 is. The city should be teaching children compassion, that animal cruelty is not a form of entertainment. I am not a resident of Lancaster, but your children are, and your children will be my neighbors, and they will be those taking care of us when we get older, and they will be leaving the city, like, city boundaries. So, they are everyone's children. They're society's children, and you shouldn't... So they are everyone's children, they're society's children, and you should not be teaching them cruelty. You should be showing them respect, God's animals. Horses are constantly walking and standing on hard streets. Lameness and hoof deterioration are inevitable in horses who pull carriages. The exhaust fumes from urban traffic is extremely dangerous for horses. Horses walk with their head lowered, usually about 3, 3 1/2 feet above street level. These animals would truly be living a nose-to-tailpipe existence. Horse-drawn carriages are accidents waiting to happen. Horses have black and white vision and only see two-dimensional. To a horse, a manhole could be a bottomless pit. Cornell University, you can check this, this is documented, found that air temperature recorded by the Weather Bureau can be nearly 50 degrees cooler than asphalt temperatures. I asked the City of Lancaster if you are ready to take the responsibility of 1,200 pounds crashing through traffic and killing both horses and people, all from the result of horses who may become spooked or people who don't know how to act around horses. Animal cruelty is not longer tolerated in the 21st century, and I asked Mayor Paris to take to the public for the vote of horse-drawn carriages instead of taking to your Facebook. Thank you.
Excuse me, who's Facebook?
You have friends that are in your Facebook that said that you took a vote on horse-drawn carriages.
I wasn't aware of that. I have an administrator for my Facebook. I'll find out what's happening.
Okay, we can maybe fax you a page of that, so you can see.
Cameron Osteen.
Hello, my name is Cameron Osteen. I am the education and outreach liaison for Animal Acres of Anacton. I'm also a resident of the City of Lancaster. I live here in the Artis Lofts, actually just recently moved there. I'm here to voice my opposition to ordinance 965, which would bring the horse-drawn carriages to Lancaster. As a resident, I don't feel that this would add to the entertainment value of coming to the Boulevard. I think the changes that have come to the city and specifically the Boulevard are amazing, and I'm so thrilled to see that. I don't think this will add to that. I think this will detract from the equality and what we as a city are trying to build. I would love if you would take the time to watch the documentary film Blinders, which looks at the conditions that carriage-drawn horses endure in New York City, and I have no doubt that the person who is bringing forth this ordinance to bring horse-drawn carriages to Lancaster absolutely loves and adores her horses. I'm sure she does. But it comes down to it as a business, and businesses require money to stay in operation, and the first thing to suffer will be the care and quality for the horses. So if you reference the movie Blinders, it's available at blindersthemovie.com. It'll demonstrate what has been happening in New York. New York City is also under fire from national organizations like the People for Ethical Treatment of Animals, and I don't think Lancaster as a city would very much like to be under the scrutiny of such an intense organization, which is currently launching a major campaign against New York City to oppose their allowance of horse-drawn carriages. The temperatures, which I am well aware of here in the summer, when it gets up to 110 degrees many times, is tough on us living here, and I can only imagine what horses required to work in these temperatures will endure, and it actually, it makes me cringe and very ill, and it will make living on the Boulevard that much more difficult, and I would plan to be in attendance at any protest that would happen if this is allowed to come to my city. Thank you so much for your attention. Have a wonderful rest of the day.
Thank you. Okay, let's close the hearing, public hearing. Any discussion? I'm sorry, I got in late. Okay, come on down. I do remember you being back there. You're Jay Weiner?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Thank you very much for that. As you said, my name is Jay Weiner. I'm the president of the Gentle Barn Foundation. I don't know if any of you remember the name, the Gentle Barn Foundation, but the reason you might know it is because of the number of times that we've been in Lancaster to pull animals out of these bad situations, also with Animal Acres, with Cameron's organization. I've spent, I don't know, let's see, about $100,000 now of our foundations' money working with hoarders and abuse situations with all different kinds of fighting rings and cockrings and pit bulls fighting, you name it. I've been a horse person for my whole life, so I won't tell you how many years, and my wife as well, who I run the organization with. So between the two of us, we've got 65 years of animal experience. I want you to know these animals are going to suffer, and I'm going to be the one that's going to end up getting culled, and I'm pretty sick of it. I'm pretty sick of having to raise all kinds of money to pull Lancaster out of it. I've worked directly with your animal wardens and your shelters. I see the worst-case scenario every day. I have seen the horses after they've gone through working the way that they'll have to in this kind of scenario. The age that normal horses live to is decreased substantially when they're put to work in this kind of a condition. Not just looking at the horse's perspective, I really don't think it adds, like Cameron was saying, to what you guys have here as an amazing community. There are so many of you who live here that are outstanding, but there are so many people in this community that are violating animal rights. This is going to be a business. You know, businesses profit by exploitation of animals. It's what I do for a living. I pull animals out of bad situations. I was looking at that documentary that Cameron was talking about. I hadn't seen it until today, and watching a horse lay dead on the sidewalk because it just got hit by a truck, God, I really hope that that's not where we're going here, because that's going to be the opposite of what you're trying to do. And, you know, the bottom line is, when the airport, like for the Aguado City Airport came in, everybody said, you know, "It's going to be safe, it's going to be safe," and then the planes crash, and everybody, "Oh, well, that's just going to happen. It's a fluke thing," and, you know, "That person whose family just burned up, you know, well, we'll just deal with that later." You know, I mean, that's what we're coming to. We're coming to another situation where exploitation of animals is coming into this city, and I think I'm going to have to be the one to come and clean it up. I thank you so much for giving me that extra time, and I really hope you take a good look at that documentary, because it's scary.
Thank you. Now we'll close the public hearing.
You put in a card for non-agendized. We're not at that point of the meeting yet. That's later. That's okay.
Okay, any discussion? Go ahead.
You know, I know that there are people out there that have concerns about horses being used for carriage rides. There's people who have very, very strong beliefs on the use of animals. I mean, there's vegans, there's people that have different beliefs. That's America. Animal cruelty is a crime. Horse-drawn carriage is not under one of those items that says animal cruelty. If an animal is abused by drawing a carriage or on a farm or any place, it is a crime, and we have law enforcement officers that have gone and taken horses and arrested people for mistreating their animals. And for us, as a governing body, the question, at least for me, is not whether this activity is legal or not legal, because it is legal. They can ride their horses on a carriage down the street now for the vehicle code. What we're deciding is how are we going to, as a city, properly manage a business license with having an attitude of a laissez-faire economy and allowing people to make a living? That's what my decision is, and not whether or not it should be allowable, but how do we manage it? How do we manage alcohol? How do we manage any business that comes out here? How do we manage a gas station? And so that's where I am, is that's our main question. How do we handle our business license?
I would agree with Mr. Smith's statements. What I'm looking at is the traffic that's on the Boulevard. It's at 15 miles an hour. The horses aren't going to be able to keep up with that. We don't have enough parking as it is. I don't think that the Boulevard is the right place for this. I mean, I never got to the animal cruelty part of it, but I think that it's something that we need to take a look at, is that we're going to have, our citizens are going to be very upset being behind a carriage. They're going to have to take up parking spaces for picking up passengers. They're going to take up parking spaces for watering the horses. I just don't see that it's that necessary to have this at this time.
You know, I think this started off with a unique idea that hopefully would complement the Boulevard. I myself, my position is similar to Mr. Smith, my colleague here to my left. However, the only concern that I've got is, I'm not quite for sure the applicability at times when the owner would want to, of the business, would want to use the horse and carriage versus some of our venues. I'm clear, we wouldn't be compatible to any of the events that we've had, because I've been on the Boulevard at times where, just from a pedestrian standpoint, you can't even get around. So my thoughts are maybe that we might want to look at a modification, and I'm not quite for sure how this would apply, but throwing out the idea that maybe we ought to test it for six months, because I think ultimately, I think we're going to find out that it's just not going to be compatible. Again, I think it's a great idea. I have to side with Mr. Smith here, because I think that it's really not about cruelty. I have a different opinion about horses. I was raised with horses. I had a horse. I've got close relations that literally bred horses for a living, so I think that we're on opposite sides about horses and how they're used and whether it would be cruelty. I think the parameters that have been established are well within guidelines, and, you know, my personal opinion is I just don't think that it would end up being cruel, because again, the comments made were, you know, in the excess of that 95 degrees. And again, I think what we'll find out is, is it's just not going to work, and I'd be willing to not poo-poo the idea, but keep an open mind to it. I would be willing to do some kind of a modification for a temporary position, and I think the owners of the business would find that it's just not compatible to the Boulevard, and it's just, long-term, it's not going to work out.
For one thing, we're not going to tolerate any kind of animals being abused in the City of Lancaster. I don't have a problem with horse-drawn carriages on the Boulevard. I have actually thought it through, what would be the route? I know that the handlers have said that they will move over any time that they can for any kind of traffic. I also envision that you'd probably go around the American Heroes Park. There would be not just up and down the Boulevard, but you would go, you know, back and forth on either side of the Boulevard. And I just think that it might be a good thing for some of our kids that are in the cities that don't have access to animals sometimes to be around those animals, and I know that horses and certain dogs are bred to be work animals, and they love it. So I'm not opposed to bringing it back for an update in three to six months to see what are, because with everything that's new, there's going to be challenges, and you're going to have to work through those difficulties, if there's any, and bring it back in, let's say, three months, and make sure everything's going smooth or see what we have to do. But I don't think that it's going to be as big a problem as some people are thinking it will be at this point.
Is there a motion?
I'll move that we introduce ordinance number 965.
Is there a second?
You said you'd bring it back in three months or six months? How would we do that?
Well, with a three-month review.
How would we do that?
Yeah, that's the only thing that I had a question about. Is that a possibility, Mr. McEwen?
The ordinance doesn't become effective for approximately 45 days from now.
Right.
We have a second reading at the next meeting, and then 30 days from that date for it to become effective. There are a couple ways you can do this. One, you could introduce tonight, we'll adopt it in due course, and it'll become effective by roughly the first week or two of July. And then ask staff to bring back a review of that, say, in three to six months or sometime in the fall, because then you will have had some climate changes to go through and see how that works. And then you could either leave the ordinance in place or repeal it at that point in time, or you could put into it now a termination provision that the ordinance, unless readopted, terminates in, say, six months, just to give enough time for it to work. Either way will work, and we can get there.
My thoughts would be, if on both sides of the fence, if some of the things were to come to light, obviously, if we closely monitor it, we'd find out if there was some of the, again, I think it's more of opinion, that would surface. Or maybe we find out that it wasn't applicable at all, and we'd rescind it, or even for the fact that maybe the owners of the carriage business would find it's just not lucrative, and it's just not, you know, they're just not going to do it for, you know, just the exercise of the horses. I don't know. Thought process.
Why are we introducing it today and adopting it today, rather than introducing it and then adopting it at the following meeting?
Because under government code, the requirement is that the introduction and adoption have to be separated by at least five days.
So why aren't we voting for the adoption at the next meeting?
We are.
Oh, we're not doing it today?
Not today. We're introducing it today.
My cheat sheet has it that we're doing it all today. Am I just reading it wrong?
No, the permit fees are...
Because what I'd like to do is, I'd like to watch that DVD on Blinders. And, you know, that doesn't help you. It doesn't help you to come in here and threaten me with protests either. What we're trying to do is making an intelligent decision based on the information before us, and it just doesn't help your cause to do that. So the rules are, the rules are that you stay quiet. I would like you to give me the DVD on Blinders, because I want to watch that before I vote on this, okay?
Jason Haslam.
Okay, good. Thank you.
The subsection B is just for the fees, that's all, if not the ordinance.
Okay, so what we're voting on today is the introduction of the ordinance.
Correct.
The amount of the permit fees.
Correct.
And the next meeting is when we vote to adopt the ordinance.
Right, that would be the June...
So no horse is going to be going up and down that Boulevard with passengers, at least until after the next meeting.
Right, and the next meeting, I believe, is three weeks from now, not two.
Three weeks from now, so that gives us time to watch the DVD.
If Mr. McEwen could elaborate, at that time, we could not adopt the ordinance. We could amend the ordinance and reintroduce it, or we could make changes. We could do something different.
Well, if you amend the ordinance, yeah, you'd have to then reintroduce it, reintroduce it, and then it would require at least another five days before you could adopt at a regular meeting, and so you'd come back at the second meeting in June to adopt it, if you made changes at the first meeting in June.
It still gives us flexibility.
So it gives you a great deal of flexibility, and as I pointed out, there are three weeks between tonight's meeting and the next meeting, so there's an extra week in there to review the videos and DVDs.
Kelvin, I would like an answer as to the amount of heat that is absorbed by the hooves of those horses when they're on a full summer day, and if there isn't a requirement that there be some insulation between the shoe and the hoof itself. All right? I'd also like to know if there's any studies out there indicating as to what the horse actually feels, meaning, is it painful to the horse? You know, is there a natural insulation in that hoof that, I mean, it seems to me obvious that if you're subjecting... a, a horse to that type of heat, that it has to hurt. And I don't know how you want to define cruel and unusual, but to me, if it hurts, it hurts, and we, we shouldn't do it. So I would like the answer to that question too, between this meeting and the next meeting, okay? And, Mr. Weiner?
Yes?
If, you could give me the stats on the longevity?
Of the horse?
The longevity of the horses on the...
Versus a pasture horse?
Yes.
No problem.
Thank you. Okay. There's a motion, there's a second.
So the motion to introduce with a, bringing it back in three months for review after the initiation of the, after it becomes in effect? Is that correct, Councilman Marcus?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Let's vote. Okay. Do we have to do the B, the B part of the resolution? Is there a motion?
Move we adopt resolution number 1123.
I'll second that.
Let's vote, sorry. It's one abstention, which is me, one no, and three yeses. Moving on. Oh, this is my item. Actually, Dan, are you here? Do you want to do the presentation on this, as to what you want to do?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and Council members. In consideration for a name change to currently the Lancaster Museum and Art Gallery, the Lancaster Museum and Public Art Foundation Board has requested, after reviewing and looking at the name of the Lancaster Museum, we find it that in years past, it's possible that artists in the area and things like that, the museum did have a component for an art gallery. We are not an art gallery, and what has happened is, with the changes that are happening on the Boulevard, with the new museum being built, and moving on to the Boulevard being the center point of what is happening, it's appropriate that the name be modified to include the Lancaster Museum of Art and History, which we find that with the rich history of not only this valley, but other histories and cultures, that that is more of an appropriate name and suits this city better.
Thank you. And this is what the Arts Foundation wanted to do, is that right?
That is correct.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, any questions?
Is there a cost to it?
Well, there, there would be some associated cost in changing signage and things of that nature.
Not a great deal.
But nothing of significance, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move that we change the City of Lancaster Museum and Art Gallery to the Lancaster Museum of Art and History.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Councilmember Crist.
The Allen Valley Transit Authority, we did hire a new executive director, Julie Austin. We were able to pay her the exact base amount that her predecessor received. We did cancel the design line contract for 15 buses, and we put in a demand for $2,229,000 as far as a refund for performance issues. We had $407,000 in liquidated damages, plus we have $100 a day for the 15 buses, so we put in that demand and that they refund that amount within 30 days. Out of the three people that resigned, two filed claims against the AVTA, which the board denied. The investigation by Deborah Riley was completed, and we expect criminal prosecution of two of the members. We did have a meeting today, which some out of the area contracts were rebid to allow for local contractors to bid on them, so that was a good thing. And the new executive director is riding the buses to observe the complaints that the people are doing, so she's doing a great job.
Thank you. Any questions? No action on the financing authority of, Jason, any announcements?
No, sir.
City Clerk, any announcements?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to address the City Council on any items that are not on the agenda. You'll find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. We respectfully request that you fill the cards out completely and print as clearly as possible, so that if the councils, city manager, or staff needs to get in touch with you, they will have your information. As much as we appreciate your request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please understand your time begins when you start to speak. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. When you approach the podium, you'll see three lights. The green light comes on when your time begins, the red, the yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds left, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process for the meeting. State law does prohibit the City Council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Gutierrez?
We missed you last time, Mayor. Forgive me, I got the wrong one.
It's okay.
Let me go over something that I didn't bring to your attention. I want to know, excuse me, if it's possible, I called it a shindig last time, it's a hoedown, I guess, that if they had it in the fair, it would bring some recognition toward the flea market and farmer's market. The hoedown, I, I got some research on this, I'm not a country person, okay? Let's see, the companies would advertise, you know, they'd get the advertisement for the future farmers in the crops, country music, using the banjos, the ukulele, the bass guitar jug playing, slide guitar harmonica, cowbell barrels, I mean, I went to South Carolina for a year and a half, I think that's beautiful. I'm a Californian. Anyways, okay. Future, I would like to bring to your attention that if we can get advocates out here, you guys don't have to do as much work. I mean, for the veterans, for the so-called, sorry about that, my tuning glasses, victim of crime out here, we don't get help, and I'm a victim of crime, but I'm a survivor. Now, let's see, the disabled people with the regional center, the HUD, you guys do have a HUD program here, but do you have an advocate? Renters' Rights. I'm right now, if somebody illegally evicted me, I'm a homeless person. I'm in the street because people get thrown out of their houses like crazy, you know what I'm saying? And I'm over here like, we wouldn't have to go through this if the advocates would do the work for us. If we would get the help of Los Angeles, you know, like, people had to walk out already. Today, I, I literally had a telephonic conference with the judge in the regional center, and here, if we can get the advocates over here to help us, there wouldn't have to be as much work. We don't get the help in mental health, we don't get the help of the victim of crime, we don't get the help also, like I said, of the veterans, nothing. We don't get the help in the HUD, we don't get the help of the San Fernando, there we go. It's in San Fernando, but the thing is, how can everybody travel over there? If, you know what I'm trying to say here? We have the access, you guys pay the taxes, but the thing is, are you getting what Los Angeles is supposed to be giving us? Half of Los Angeles, I'm sorry to say, moved over here, but where the resources to keep the people, like the shelter brought to your attention. Thank you for getting rid of that woman, and you're going to sell it to somebody else, I'm told. Thank you, but that shelter is not big enough for all of us, okay? They, it's not going to be big enough. And I am going to bring future information about the veterans. Myrtle Beach in South Carolina has a campground, and the veterans are looking into it. I have friends who pull together their information and bring it to me, and I'm going to bring to you the campground information. In other words, if they were to have a campground, they could live on the campground, because I mean, what else have veterans done but lived that way to survive? So if what they, you know, what they learned, they can use, and they can survive, because I mean, looking at a veteran in the street, come on, and I'm a developmentally disabled person at the regional center, I have epilepsy. Wouldn't it be better if we had the advocates help us? Thank you.
Thank you. David G.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. Pleased to speak again. Sorry I missed you two weeks ago. Had some important things to say. And today, I want to say I became a father on the 17th to a beautiful baby girl, and I was supposed to go see a movie today, and I didn't get to because my girlfriend knows how much this, this means to me to come and speak my piece. I have an issue to address about a person by the name of Jeremy Clark who was arrested. He is sitting right now in the county jail for obstruction of justice, assault on a peace officer, and, let me see, what was the other charge? In a vehicle without the owner's consent. Now, the situation behind this is that there was a noise complaint to this house, and the residents decided not to cooperate with the sheriffs. They decided not to answer their front door, or address the sheriffs in any way, shape, or form, they just wanted their privacy. And so instead of the sheriffs allowing them to have their privacy, they decided to jump over the wall. They decided to invade their privacy, invade their space inside their backyard. It is on film. People are on film saying, you're not allowed here, why are you in my backyard? The gate was locked, they went to the gate and they showed the gate that was locked, okay? So, the people were in there trying to enjoy their night. Whatever they were doing is their business, it's none of mine. But when somebody was upset enough to go out front and videotape them, kind of the stuff that I do, okay, they decided, chase them down, shoot them with a taser, and then throw them in jail for these violations, which the sheriffs had no right whatsoever to be inside the property, let alone harassing them. And there's rumors going around that the sheriffs turned off their, their power. So, I've been interviewing a lot of these people that were there, and a lot of them said they didn't see Jeremy fight with the sheriffs, they didn't see any of that going on, they just seen the sheriffs attack him, okay? And I, I understand that you guys are arresting a lot of people here, okay? That's true. But are you guys arresting the wrong people? I have no qualms about you being tough on crime, are you gallivanting around the city, going on parole sweeps or probation sweeps? But when you have a criminal violating the law, you know what, serve him his justice, okay, that's fine. But when you guys are too aggressive with us, and you're too aggressive with just normal people off of a noise complaint of all things, having 12 squad cars at the house, that is just uncalled for, it's, it's ridiculous. And, that's it.
Tyler Groucher, did I get that right? Bob Trentum?
Hello, my name is Bob Trentum, I've lived here since 1954. My wife and I have lived on Shiloh Lane since 1989. It's the neighborhood just east of Eastside High School, the next street east of 35th Street East, actually. We have this problem on my street, it's a speeding traffic. The population of Eastside High School, the morning, afternoon, rush hour, I call it, is, I can't, yesterday I counted 11 cars that were going over 50 miles an hour on my street. This is an interior neighborhood street with no sidewalks, and now, I called the sheriff about last fall, I tremendously love our sheriff station here. They came out, they sent a traffic officer out for a couple days, traffic slowed down for a couple days, and then I also contacted my longtime friend Marvin Crist. And then the last time I was here, I was getting ready to give this pitch to you all, and hoping you could help us, and I ran into a lieutenant friend of mine here also, and he told me he'd start keeping an eye on this, so he sent out that speed, speedometer trailer, I call it, and all that, and they slowed down and so forth, but we're just not getting any help, there's, there's no results and all that for the... What's happened is, if you're not familiar with Eastside High School, the drop-off and pickup situation is a complete disaster, whatnot, they, this traffic just floods this area and all that. We brought this problem up to the high school, when they planned this high school, and they said, oh no, this is not going to happen, don't worry about this, and this is actually happening now. We're seeking your help. Our, our neighborhood children are at risk now, again, there's no sidewalks, you have to walk on the street here now and all that. So, trying to find a solution to this, this is the last stop, or the second to the last stop, maybe.
We're getting those, those flashing stop signs, and can we, can we direct it into that area first, and can we also do something about stepping up the enforcement?
Yeah.
I mean, when they're, when they're this frustrated, you know, when regular folks are this frustrated, we, we need to do something.
I can appreciate the sending out the sheriffs, but again, they, they just can't be there every time and all that.
That's really...
I don't expect them to be, you can't...
Other than changing the signage and things of that nature, and we are looking at, you know, those stop signs that actually have LED...
Right.
That spells out stop, and it flashes, and we're, we're looking at some innovative things to do in these areas. Other than sending traffic enforcement out there, there's not much we can do.
We're considering possibly a cul-de-sac on both Rickabosh, it's the next street to the east, because if we stop Shiloh Lane where I live at, they're just going to go down Rickabosh and all that, really.
We'd, we'd certainly work with you on that.
Mr. Trentum...
Somebody told me, also, excuse me, just for a quick sec, that during, the Neighborhood Watch captain told me that during the Neighborhood Watch meeting, that Mr. Cottle came there, and they brought up this cul-de-sac idea, and he told it, told them it couldn't be done or whatever, so again, this, I, I'm just running into these dead ends every, every place and all that.
He's, he's going to work harder on it.
Well, he, they, now, not, this is third-hand, now, they, she explained to me that he said that a fire engine couldn't turn around on a cul-de-sac.
Mr. Trentum, I, I live just a street over from you.
I'm aware of that.
I've actually sat where Shiloh and Rickabosh.
Yes.
And within a seven to 10-minute period, I, I would have to go back and check my numbers, but there were 45 cars that came from Shiloh and turned down Rickabosh, and some of them don't stop.
It's tremendous, there's no question, it's...
And it, it is an ongoing problem, we have talked with Dr. Kelly at the high school, we have, actually, Danita Nguyen came and sat with me, you know, for a few minutes at that one period, and Shiloh gets the worst of it.
It is.
Yeah, but there are cars that do 50 and above going down Rickabosh also.
Absolutely, every day, twice a day.
I understand your frustration, it is, it is absolutely insane at drop-off and pickup time. I have videotaped, I've taken pictures, and other than, I, I mean, I really don't know what the answer is, and as far as, as gating those communities, when we investigated it, the property owners would have to give up part of their property so that a fire truck could turn around.
Sure.
So, we're still looking...
Now, again, you say a fire truck can't turn around, have you driven the fire engine before, or...
You know, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Okay.
We, we run into this problem all the time, and that the LA County Fire Department has, I mean, I, I think it's insanity that that has to be the, that they have to be able to turn around.
I've been a fireman for 35 years, I just, just retired last year and all that, 35 years. I worked with Marvin. I've never, ever left the fire engine on the street, never.
No, I, I understand what you're saying.
But I have, but what I have done though is, done CPR on a child going to the AV hospital, and then have to come out and show their, tell their parents that this child's dead, because a speeding car hit him.
No, I understand that. I want, I want some energy put on this, okay? More than there has been, and if we have to work something out with the fire department, we have to work something out with the fire department, but obviously, there has to be a balancing here.
Maybe a gauge, we thought of a, like, some type of electronic gauge also, possibly, where they have, we used to have clickers all the time in the engines and all that, I'm not sure, but...
We'll get creative, all right?
I really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
I blame Robert Neal at Public Works. Seriously, in all seriousness, I do want some energy put on this, all right? It's been going on for years now.
And just to give some credence to what he said, I know that the, the former captain, Lieutenant Doughton, they all have deployed, but like Bob was saying, that they can't be there all, all the times, but they have, you know, put an effort into it, but we do need to do something that's more permanent.
Hey, if I could get away with it, I'd put tire spikes out, you know?
This is my second to the last stop, like I said, I can handle it if you want me to. You're probably not... You're probably not going to enjoy what I...
Well, I'm good with that, let's take a vote. Okay, David Paul.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, good evening. I can sympathize with Mr. Trent, 10, 12, 15 times a day, people blow down my street at 50, 60 miles an hour right through my stop sign, I've been, that's what got me in here, complaining seven years ago, start off my career, coming to City Council. My boy, I was really proud of this, the wind was really blowing one day, and he said to me, "How come the wind only blows like hell on garbage day?" And I thought that was very zen, and they put it in the paper, and on the quote that came with that paper, it says, "But goodness alone is never enough, a heart-cold wisdom is required too, for goodness to accomplish good. Goodness without wisdom invariably accomplishes evil." That's Robert Healman. Another quote I have here, "To go against the dominant thinking of your friends, of most of the people you see every day, is perhaps the most difficult act of heroism you can perform." Now, I just got tired of complaining about the traffic, because there is nothing we can do. We have to have those dips like are on Jackman by the senior center, that slows people down, that's the only thing that'll slow them down. But, Mr. Mayor, you'd be glad to know that I picked up the Flourish book, and I just started reading it, I read the first couple chapters, and it's very intriguing. Basically, if you change the way you look at things, the things you look at change, that's the premise of the book, and trying to get people to change the way they look at things is the hardest part of the job. That's what I've been doing up here all these years, trying to enact change, and sometimes it's frustrating and sometimes it's rewarding. It's very frustrating when those cars go down my street. I saw here today in the paper, there's this, around the state, San Jose has a new approach to police complaints, and people who think an officer was disrespectful now have a chance to talk about that in front of a retired judge. I put a similar concept to the Criminal Justice Commission just last time, and I can understand why you might want a judge to do that for many reasons, however, I think a commission or a body we could put together could do that. I mean, I understand both sides, I have the trust of the sheriff, and I hope for this council to be fair to the police and to also hear what people are talking about, and it's a good thing to let them vent that. I also read last week in the paper that San Jose, they're really doing some stuff, they collected $290,000 for one month off of the tax for medical marijuana. So that's about $4 million a year, and the main thing that that does is it takes the money out of the hands of the criminals. So I have to open it up, I have to start pressing a little harder, and I just ask your patience and your forgiveness. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the speaker cards. Any comments from the council?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I want to tell you that this last Thursday night, I attended the awards banquet for Desert Haven, and I was proud and honored to be able to represent the city and receive the Contractor of the Year Award. And Dan Muntz, one of the supervisors and maintenance, was one of the key instrumental employees representing the city that got us that prestigious award, so I want to tell you how I was real touched with us being able to, in this time, be able to help adults that are mentally handicapped, give them work, as well as be able to take care of the city. So I think Dan should be commended for the work that's been done over the last couple of years.
Thank you. Anyone else? We're all good? As you can see from, did it make the agenda about the pit bull ordinance?
It's under the law.
Okay, all right. All right. One of the things I'd like you guys to think about for next week, or the next meeting, or the meeting after, is changing the pit bull ordinance to make the landlord responsible for any attacks of pit bulls that he is aware of, being, or he or she is aware of, being on the property. We can talk about it then, but I thought I'd give some people advance notice and we could deal with it in that manner. We are adjourned until Tuesday, June 14th, 2011, at 5:00 PM. Carol, I'm coming home.